Visitors and guests. And we always start our council meeting with an invocation that leads to our Pledge of Allegiance. And we're gonna start our invocation with our mayor pro tem, Councilwoman Sarah Lucido. Good evening, Ms. Lucido.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dear God, we continue to ask for your blessing and guidance for the city of East Point. Please watch over all of our residents, both while we are at home and out traveling on the roads. We pray that as summer continues, that we will take the opportunity to better get to know each other and to take the time to turn neighbors into friends. That is what we need to build our community and to keep our city strong. It is in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone that participated in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to begin our meeting with the proclamation for National Cat Pack Day. The young lady, Ms. Dubois, is she here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, welcome back to our East Point Council meeting. This is your third time here and we appreciate you being patient with us. And
Thank you.
I know I said I was going to give you the floor and let you read this if you still wanted to do that. I don't know how you feel about that.
Yes, ma'am, I would love to read the proclamation for Cat Pack Day.
Okay, sounds good.
Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am, we're ready.
Okay, City of East Point Proclamation for National Cat Pack Day, June the 7th, 2021. Whereas National Cat Pack Day, pronounced Cat Pack, is an acronym for Citizens Against Police Harassment, Police Against Citizens Harassment, and is celebrated annually, June the 7th, as a day of solidarity between police and citizens to raise awareness of the mutual need to eradicate both police harassment of citizens and citizen harassment of police. And whereas National Cat Pack Day was founded by global leader, equality advocate, and me off my neck movement founder, Rashawn Dubois, to facilitate peaceful citizen-police interaction in all communities. And whereas National Cat Pack Day founder Rashawn Dubois, who has served as the impetus for positive police-community interaction and programs in other police departments, it's adamant that it is equally as nefarious for citizens to harass police officers as it is for police officers to harass citizens for any reason, and that such harassment by either party must be eradicated to foster a collaboratively progressive police-citizen environment. And whereas, East Point police officers, like all police officers who vow to serve and protect citizens, must be adept at interacting with all citizens irrespective of race, gender, or sexual orientation. Also, it is imperative pardon me?
Go ahead, ma'am. Please turn off your cell phones at this time and put on or put your Zoom account on mute, please. Please continue. Ms. Dubois.
Whereas, yes, ma'am, were you asking me to do something?
Yes, you can continue, please.
Okay, whereas, East Point police officers, like all police officers who vow to serve and protect citizens, must be adept at interacting with all citizens irrespective of race, gender, or sexual orientation. Also, it is imperative that citizens allow officers to serve and protect irrespective of race, gender, or sexual orientation. And whereas National Cat Pack Day seeks to reduce the incidence of unwarranted needless arrests during police-citizen interaction by encouraging both parties to behave in a non-threatening manner towards the other. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of East Point, do hereby recognize June the 7th, 2021 as National Cat Pack Day in the City of East Point, Michigan. Proclaim this sixth day of July, 2021.
Thank you so much. And the reason she came and we spoke on this is, well, a lot of things that we seen last year and what we don't want to see this year. And you want to make sure that we respect each other, no matter what background or et cetera. And that's on both ends, as far as police and also citizens. Is that correct, Ms. Dubois?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And thank you for helping put this together. And I hope that people in every city and across the United States proclaim this as well. So, thank you, good job.
Oh, thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna go to roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sorry. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Councilmember Curly.
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Damanico.
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilmember Moore.
Here, in East Point, Michigan.
Mayor Owens.
Here, in East Point, Michigan, thank you. Welcome all council. Approval of the agenda at this time, does any council member need to add or subtract anything from the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
To approve the agenda, adding one item, and that's the reappointment of Jaclyn, McCoon, and Duane Brennan to the Board of Review.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item is the hearing of the public at this time. We always welcome the pains and ideas of the public. And you get three minutes. We ask you to be respectful at this time because our agents are listening to this and we are a representation of our city and our community. So, at this time, we ask Ms. Walton to open up the hearing of the public and welcome everyone.
I believe Councilmember Lucido has someone in council chambers that would like to speak.
Yes.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Robertson. I own Fitz Entertainment. I've done a firework tent for the past three years at 10 mile and 994 in the city of East Point. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no on both city ordinance being brought for vote tonight to ban tent sales. The economic impact that this will cause between the landowners that rent the land, the state of Michigan, for the sales tax, for the firefighters fund, the money spent in the local businesses for the 10 days we're open. We also ask that the building versus a tent theory was proved wrong in Macomb County Court, saying that a building is more safe than a tent. That is not true. It's been challenged by Sterling, or I'm sorry, Frazier and Shelby Township. All I'm asking is to keep it the way it is. Don't change something that's not broke. If you want to boost the fees up on a firework tent, make a special tent permit for fireworks and charge $500. I think that's a better avenue to go. To get rid of tents altogether is not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else at this time?
Mayor, there's someone with a Galaxy S21 that has their hand raised.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Brown, the Motor City Bears youth football team. Am I allowed to speak now?
Oh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to say I've been a resident of East Point since 1989 and I moved out, but I also have two residents, two homes in East Point. And I have a youth league. You, hold on, I'm at the field now. I have a youth league and we practice at John F. Kennedy. And I've been having some issues with Mr. Lup, Tony Lupus Park and Recreation. I think he's over Park and Recreation.
Lupuski, okay. Is it Tony Lupuski?
Yes, I bought this to the city council a couple of years ago and as well as last year. And we didn't play last year because of the pandemic. But I would just like to say, we're out here to do a community work. I've got kids off the street, I got about 200 kids. They all from East Detroit, Center Line, all in the area. Most of them are here, 85% of my kids live in East Point. And we always got some feedback with him. He wants to kick us off, he wants to tell us we can't be here. And I pay, I pay for this field. I pay and we clean up, we do everything. The police come around and check us out. We don't have no problems, we don't have no issues. But it seemed like when I go to him, it's always something I've done. Like, he sent me a letter stating the board didn't like what happened. Said I cussed somebody out. I don't curse. And plus, I wasn't even in the city of Michigan during the time he sent me the letter. I do have the letter, if you want me to read it. It's not very long, but if I don't have enough time, I can always fax it to whoever I need to get it to. But I'm here to do a service for the community. We can't even have things out here for the kids. You know, if you play football, you gotta have equipment. We can't even put stuff out here for the kids to play or to practice with. And it's always something. And so, I'm at a point now where I've talked to a couple of city councils and they was getting everything done, but the pandemic started. So, I just want to know, what do I need to do to make this better for these kids and as well as East Point community?
Thank you. We usually give feedback at the end. You have a couple of minutes left, but we usually give feedback at the end. I don't know if you're aware of that. And you can also, if you feel like reading the letter or send it to us, I don't know how long it is. You can get additional three minutes at the end. I don't know, I know you're at the game right now.
Yes.
But you also, you can also send us that letter. And at the end, we'll respond or you can email all of us with that letter, including the city manager, and we can get back with you. That's okay.
Okay, that's fine. But if I have a time to read it, I can read it now or I can just send it to you. It doesn't make a difference.
You can go ahead and read it.
Okay, hold on one second, I'm getting it out, hold on.
How long is the letter? A couple, six or seven?
Here it is, right here. It's about, it's, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know what happened, I got lost somewhere. Okay, it's about, one, two, three, about four paragraphs. And it's it's a complaint about the field at Kennedy. I'll just paraphrase it a little bit.
Okay, please.
I received a complaint regarding your use of the field at Kennedy Park, East Point, Michigan, youth football. Upon reserving this area for practice, you assure me that you would keep the area clean and treat the residents and staff with respect, which we do. He said, "Last week, we were supposed to leave garbage out there, which it wasn't." Keep, I'm just trying to paraphrase it a little bit. Field was not normal, so staff request you please return and I'm reading what he wrote, and the area, it was removed. I'm gonna go down to the next one. Should you wish to continue to use the Kennedy Field for your practice, you must keep the area clean. Should any other incidents like this occur, your reservation will be canceled and your payment
Okay, that's about three minutes, but that pretty much summed it up. No, that's fine.
Okay.
We only get three minutes. So, if you can email us that, the rest of it, I think we got a little, a lot about what you said, idea what you said. But we'd like to see that later.
Okay, I would definitely email whomever I need to email it to.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate you coming to the meeting.
Okay, thank you guys for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Walton.
Mayor Eddie in Mercy would like to speak next.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, so here we go again. These problems have yet to be resolved. I'm getting nothing but endless excuses for the nuisance tenant ordinance not being enforced. The noise ordinance isn't being enforced. The garbage cans are overflowing to where the lids don't even shut on the garbage cans and the trash falls out. Where's it end up? My front yard, my backyard? This is ridiculous. I'm not paying taxes to be given endless excuses. And that is just ridiculous. You guys are all public servants. If you don't want residents complaining, then do your job. If you don't like the criticism, you know, remember First Amendment. We do have the right to redress our government of our grievances without fear of reprisal or retaliation. That means you don't get to be anything less than professional in your responses. Don't come back with snarky sarcastic remarks to me. You guys are public servants, I'm not. You know, I don't I am all for the First Amendment, you know? And I will let you know when you're not doing your job. I'm not gonna swear at you because that's not necessary. But I will let you know, you guys are failing miserably to do your job. And now, you want to do this thing with the fireworks, have brick and mortar buildings? You guys can't even enforce the ordinances you have on the books. There's this massive-sized branch behind the rental garage. It's been there for over a year. You've done nothing to get that thing removed. You've ignored the noise ordinances, you've ignored the nuisance tenant ordinances, and this just goes on and on and on and on and on. And every time, you just give nothing but excuses. Well, congratulations because, you know, you've created this massive nuisance tenant who thinks she can just do whatever she wants with impunity that the ordinances don't apply to her, the laws don't apply to her because you stick your fingers in your ears, la 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 la, we don't want to hear about it. Oh, no, nothing wrong here. No, you guys don't want to do your job, you're not doing your job. And it's not me, it's not just me
Exactly, ma'am.
is saying you're not doing your job. The planning commission even said you're not doing your job. I mean, in the fireworks, it's like, the fireworks just went off five minutes ago by Kennedy Park. I mean, this is not smart. You guys need to fix the problems in the city and not
Time is up, Ms. Eddie and Marcy, both names. Thank you. You have additional three minutes at the end if you would like to continue. Thank you. Ms. Walton.
Mayor Gary Myron would like to speak next.
Sounds good, good evening, Mr. Myron, how are you?
Good evening, how are you? The social district, I think it's a great idea. I know you're looking for feedback through the city. Farmer's Market, great idea. I think it'll work out good. I'm excited about it and keep up the good work and hope it'll turn out one day. And thank you, Cardi, for showing me how to put the hand up. So, that's it, have a good day.
You too, thank you. Anyone else, Ms. Walton?
Nothing in the chat, and I don't see any additional hands raised.
Okay. Moving right along. The first hearing of the public is now closed. We're going to the approval of the minutes. Yes, sir, councilman.
I would move that we approve the minutes from the show calls hearing of June 1st, 2021.
For Motion and support, please call the roll.
Member Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
Member Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
And Councilmember Damanico.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 2nd, 2021.
Support. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from June 15th, 2021.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido.
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings, but we're gonna go right into unfinished business. It's the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 21-1213 for a zoning ordinance text amendment to Chapter 50, zoning, Article 4, Administration and Enforcement for Section 50-53, temporary uses, and Article 10, Office and Business Districts, Section 50-91, B1, Community Business District of the Ordinance of the City of East Point. Council, like to start on this conversation. Now, I believe this is starting with the fireworks, correct? We have our fire marshal and our building director on here. So, we have two items on here concerning the fireworks. One is the tent and one is the building, correct me if I'm wrong.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so the first one is regarding the tents, correct?
The one deals with, they coexist with one another. One is an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance and the other is an amendment to the code of ordinances for the city of East Point. So, it essentially, in a nutshell, not allow the sale of fireworks from a tent. It would have to be from a brick and mortar building. I believe the fire marshal is present to answer any specific questions. I know he's done a lot of research on this. I can't tell from my screen whether he's on there or not, but
Yeah, yeah, how are you doing, fire marshal?
Good, ma'am.
And then we have one that is right behind it. So, what's the difference between the two? Is one is a tent and one is the building or is one that's right behind it, right? This is the zoning and this is the use?
Yeah, they both, Madam Mayor, they both have the same effect. One, just in order for the one to pass, we also needed an amendment to the code of ordinances. So, that's the reason for the two separate ordinances that are before the council this evening.
Okay, well, I'm gonna just make a statement. I think I did last meeting on this fire marshal and I voted, I voted yes. I'm gonna tell you I'm gonna vote no tonight and change my vote. And I spoke with the building director about it. It's because, like I said before, you know, being an entrepreneur and a business owner, for one, and also understanding safety, I have all that background. I was thinking that, you know, to better touch on everything, maybe we can put it in a location that of your choice, which would make it more safer that you can, you know, designate. But I believe that it's year-round, it's, you know, a couple of days out of the year. And we have entrepreneurs that come to the city. I know some entrepreneurs who have had tents in the past. And you, I think it's a barbecue restaurant that is now in a building. And so, as an entrepreneur myself and a businesswoman and an owner in East Point, I understand sometimes you have to start somewhere to get somewhere. And I also understand the safety of your position as well. So, saying that, can we do something like that where we designate a spot for, you know, the fireworks location and that's, and I know we have a East Point owns a parking lot over there by Olive Garden that we do not use. Can we designate it there and we just charge the fireworks business owner to use our lot? And we have a designated area and we get some funding for the city as well?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to address this issue
Okay.
with the fireworks. It's not about moving it to a different location, it's all about safety. One stray cigarette butt, one stray ember going across, there is nothing to protect these tents. There's no walls or anything to protect it from going up. It was just an incident in Florida where a, or Texas, there was a fireworks tent that went up. There was multiple incidences where these fireworks that were outside caused great damage. You know, there's, our job as firefighters is to save lives and property. That's what our job is. We do it in two different ways. One is somebody calls and we will address that problem when we get there and try to mitigate that. The other way is through prevention. And prevention has two aspects. One is the education. We educate people every day. When I go out into businesses, I educate them on how and why they need to do things. The other part is administrative controls, such as enforcing that fire code and also adoption of ordinances. Now, I can sit up here for probably an hour and speak to the safety of moving that into a suppressed building, but I don't think you want to sit here and listen to me regurgitate statistics for the next hour. This is, I'm just gonna talk about one thing and this is a research paper. It's the U.S. Experience with Sprinklers. And it was authored by Marty Arons in 2017, published by the NFPA. The National Fire Protection Association is the authority on fire code, not just in the United States, but throughout the world. They're established in 1896, so they've been around for a little while. According to their statistics, fire, civilian fire casualties, the deaths, are reduced by 87% in a building that has a suppression system. Tents do not have a suppression system. Civilian casualties or injuries are down 27%. Firefighter injuries are, is reduced by 67%. And one last statistic out of this is that if a fire should occur inside of a building, that 96% of the time, that fire is gonna be contained to the room of origin. It's not going to spread. So, what I love for every building in the city of East Point to have a suppression system, absolutely. I would love every home to have a suppression system. They do, they save lives, they save property. That is, I don't believe is achievable to have them all have that, however, to take a product that is in bulk, stored outside with no barriers, where the first two words on that warning label is explosive and flammable, and move that into a building, I think is the first step. Now, there's been some concern about the financial impacts of these vendors. I've been on the phone with State Fire Marshal's office numerous times over the last two weeks regarding these fireworks. Not by my choosing, however, I've had to speak to them multiple times. And I found out some interesting facts. Fireworks are marked up up to 800%. So, what you're gonna spend $40 for, they paid $5 for. Okay, according to statistical records, the one tent that was a 20 by 20 tent, based on historical sales records, well, and then there should be no change this year, brought in $70,000 in profit, $70,000 in profit for 10 days. Now, to say that they can't afford to move into a building, even if we, there's multiple vacant buildings in this city. Even if we couldn't find one that had a suppression system in it, I did a little research. And to take a building and retrofit that, it is anywhere between $2 and $7 a square foot. So, if you took that 20 by 20-foot tent, moved it into a 2,000-square-foot building, which would give them five times the sales area, they're looking at a one-time $14,000 investment, which would improve the building should they choose to not occupy that in later years. As far as the business owners getting anything out of this, according to the paperwork that was submitted, the one paid $1,000. That's what their lease agreement was for. However, the property owner had to forfeit a month's rent for somebody because they weren't gonna have enough parking. So, they were not gonna, they were gonna have their certificate of occupancy revoked. The other one paid $7,000. That one was on Eaton Gresham. That, as we all know, is a nuisance property. The city has spent over $5,000 maintaining that property. So, to say that these business owners are actually benefiting from it, they are, but they're not doing anything else for the city. Now, raising the fees, I disagree with that because it's not about fees. We could raise it to $10,000. It doesn't matter. It's about the safety. Because if one person gets hurt or injured, or one building gets destroyed because an errant cigarette butt goes rolling by and catches them on fire and starts shooting projectiles everywhere, that $10,000 isn't gonna matter. So, also, we need to think about is that if we raise it for the fireworks, do we need to raise that for every other business owner? Do we need to take a business owner that has, that pays taxes all year and wants to maybe sell some of their clothing outside on a weekend? Do we have to raise theirs to $500 or $1,000? I don't think that's fair to them, they're here all year. They don't have that markup like the fireworks do. They can afford that $500 or $1,000. I just, I just got those stats from the state. So, also, there, the gentleman stated that there is not safer. It is safer. None of them were firefighters, none of those people were fire inspectors. So, there is proof that it is safer. Anything inside of a building is safer than being outside in a tent. And then taking something that is explosive and moving that into a suppressed building is safer for everybody. Now, Now, uh, beginning in April two thousand, or August two thousand nineteen, we were able to, uh, local units of government that reside in a county of over seven hundred fifty thousand are allowed to enact these ordinances to restrict the sale. Um, we were not allowed to do that previous to that. It's only been two years and more and more cities are, are doing this. Again, Roseville did not do this to push the little guy out. It was, that ordinance was developed by then Fire Marshal, who I've known for over twenty-five years. He, uh, we've worked together at multiple different areas, on multiple scenes we've worked together. I've had meals with that man. He is the one who authored that. Um, so it is not about pushing him out. It is about the safety. That is, that is, all this is about is the safety of everyone that is involved. You know, over the weekend, they, they had some things, South LA, I don't know if you know that, they had a controlled detonation by trained professionals. Trained professionals that, um, blew up ten pounds of fireworks. Ten pounds, that's it. Injured seventeen people and caused a ton of damage. Detroit Police just confiscated five hundred pounds of fireworks. So as more tents and more things want to move into our city because we're gonna be one of the only ones that keep allowing it, there's gonna be more pop-up people selling fireworks, uh, that are gonna be illegal. Again, this is not about pushing the little man out. They, it, it's affordable. Um, and at the end of the day, it is about the safety of the residents, the business owners, and anybody that comes to the city. So, um, I really wish that you'd take that into consideration tonight, um, during this ordinance. Again, it's, it's purely about safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Lucino.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I did think about this a little bit more also, and, um, you know, I'm, around Halloween time, you'll see a lot of like pop-up Halloween stores, show up in different buildings, empty buildings. They rent them out for like the month. I don't understand why these, the fireworks, salespeople can't do the same thing. So, I agree, like, I, I think it is safer to have it in a big, brick and mortar building. So I think that, um, they could, they're like, there are empty buildings around here. There's usually always an empty building. I'm sure one of them has a compression system that they could rent temporarily, you know, during the summer months to sell their fireworks, if that's what they choose to do.
Any other council members want to speak on this? Miss, uh, Councilman Crowley?
Um, no, I, I agree with Sarah.
Yeah, so, um, you know, uh, listening to, uh, some of the, the, you know, issues with this and listening to some other concerns, you know, like I said, you know, we can create where we want. This is our city. So Fire Marshal, if you wanna create a safeguard, you can also designate where that, those locations will be and provide those safeguards. That is not something possible that you can do?
Madam Mayor, um, really unless they're in a building protected by walls, there is no safe area in the city. There really isn't. As long as they're outside, under a piece of fabric with no walls, anything driving by, parking there, um, you know, except an errant cigarette butt just flip, just discarded improperly can cause that entire thing to go up. And then it starts shooting projectiles everywhere. Um, so I, I know you, did you see about the, uh, hockey player at the goalie that just was killed by a firework? By an errant firework, twenty-four years old, hit him in the chest and killed him instantly.
Was that at a location, a rental location?
That was in, that was in Novi. It was at a house. They were lighting off fireworks, but it was an errant one that fell over and shot and it hit him right in the chest and he was dead on arrival, twenty-four years old. So imagine an entire tent of those things going up. They're all gonna go everywhere. So people, buildings, everything. So unless they're in a building with a suppression system that will contain it to that room of origin, ninety-six percent of the time, it's gonna contain it to that room of origin. And every, there's eighty-seven percent death rate, you know, has, uh, decreased, decreased the death rate by eighty-seven percent. That's a lot. Just to have that in there. These are explosives, they're projectiles, and they're flammable. It says right on the warning labels on each one of them.
I just hate that you can't find a secondary solution to it and it's only one solution. And that is what I'm trying to work with you on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if you, if you, uh, approve, I'd like to make the motion, at least get the motion on the table. And, uh, so we could either vote against it or for it. Um, I'm ready to make the motion if, if it's allowed.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Yes, ma'am. Um, I'm sorry, Councilman Crowley, we still haven't discussion on it.
We can still have a discussion on the motion. We're, we're having a discussion on nothing because there's no motion on the floor. That's all I'm saying, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilwoman Moore?
Okay, yeah, um, the last time that we voted, I actually, you know, as a business owner, uh, understood, um, being able to be in a tent and being out there and selling your wares. Uh, however, as of today, with the fire chief talking about a fire sup- uh, suppression line, um, I definitely understand that because I have to install those things in buildings. And, um, that changes the matter because it would be able to put out the fire if something was to happen. And it would contain it. And I really, um, I thought about it briefly, but when, with him going into detail about it today, it does make sense because they are very dangerous. And all you need is one spark to start the whole thing to go on. And without a fire suppression, um, line, because the heads will go off in multiple locations at the same time, a fire extinguisher would not be able to handle it.
Okay.
Yes. So that's my take on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman DeMonaco?
I still have the same opinion as last time, so I have nothing, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you Fire Marshal for that, uh, data and analysis. Taking time to do that. And thank you Councilwoman and Mayor Proton. Councilman Crowley, if you would like to move forward?
Sure, thank you, uh, Mayor. Uh, I would move to give the second reading to and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two-one-three for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty zoning article four amid administration and enforcement, section fifty dash fifty-three temporary uses in article ten, office and business district, section fifty dash ninety-one B one, community business district for the ordinances of the city of East Point.
For? Motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Moving right along to the second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two-one-four for an ordinance text amendment to chapter twenty, fire prevention and protection, article six fireworks, section twenty-nine-five and twenty-nine-six of the ordinances of the city of East Point.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to give second reading to and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve-fourteen for an ordinance text amended amendment to chapter twenty, fire prevention and protection, article six, fireworks, section twenty-nine-five and twenty-nine-six of the ordinance of the city of East Point.
Council?
With support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. We're right along on item six, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve-fifteen for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty zoning article eighteen, sign, section fifty dash one-nine-three, changeable message sign of the ordinances of the city of East Point. Council?
Sure. Mayor, I'll motion that we, uh, uh, give second reading to and adopt ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve-fifteen for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty zoning article eighteen, sign, section fifty dash one-ninety-three, changeable message sign of the ordinances of the city of East Point.
Second.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, item D, section, I'm sorry, second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty-one dash twelve-sixteen for a zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter fifty, zoning article nineteen, off-street parking, loading and layoff standard, section fifty dash two-two-three, collective or shared parking of the ordinances of the city of East Point. Council?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes. Uh, Councilwoman Lucia, are you still in the, in the main office in the chambers?
No, I am not.
Okay, give me one second. I wanna make sure that these couples that are in the chambers are out. And if they're staying, because we don't have anyone in the building but us. So give me two, um, a couple of seconds, everyone.
I believe they left, Mayor.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
They, they said they were leaving, so.
Okay, I don't know if I seen them leaving. I just wanna make sure, since we're the, um, only ones in the building. Okay, we're gonna move right along to reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Doom. Good evening, Ms. Doom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Now, I have a few things. Um, you know, we have an election coming up in November for two council seats. And I'd just like to share that any resident who is a registered voter can pull a petition to run for one of the two seats on council. Uh, if the community, anyone in the community is interested, you can contact our clerk's office. You do have until July twentieth to return, uh, your petitions at four P M in order for your name to be on the ballot. So I'll, I'll kind of share this on a, kind of, you know, weekly basis till we, as much as we can to let people know that there are two seats available. Um, we currently, I understand we have, uh, as of today, I've been told eight people who have pulled petitions. So there's a lot of interest in our community, which is always positive. Um, you know, we're all a bit tired of hearing about COVID, but COVID is still with us. So I just wanna quickly share that we've had three thousand fifty-one cases so far and we've had seventy-five deaths alone in the city of East Point. So we're not quite done with it yet. I know we've got some, um, you know, the governor has lifted a lot of restraints, but it's still very important for us to be careful and to be aware of how close we are with people and to wear a mask when we can. I won't say anymore on that. But there is a Delta, um, strain which, uh, is really taking off and people are becoming ill again. So it's just something for us all to be aware of and not get too comfortable. I know we're all ready to get back out there in the real world and go out to restaurants and eat and do all the fun things we used to, but we still need to be careful. Um, let's see. Now, I do wanna share that, um, typically our county, um, has foreclosed homes for the cities to determine if they'd like to purchase that, um, you know, that, uh, the amount of money the county has into it. This should be, there, there'll be no foreclosed homes at all. The county will not do so until next year. A lot of it has to do with our economy and COVID, so we will be working with the remaining vacant land and any properties we may have to get them rehabilitated and get those properties sold. Um, also, on a real positive note, that our Chamber of Commerce and RARE are holding a summer stroll event on July twenty-seventh from five to seven P M. It will be at the Roseville Veterans Memorial Park. There's a small cost. It's five dollars for, um, residents for the adults and three dollars for children, but it, uh, looks like it's going to shape up to be a wonderful program. People can contact RARE or our chamber for more information and more details. And that's what I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our city manager at this time, Council?
Mayor, I, I had two.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, hi, Manager Doom. Um, just two items. One about, uh, GFL. Um, I had, uh, previously in an email asked if we could invite them out to a meeting. Wondering if we could, you know, unless the council, uh, disagrees, uh, invite them out to our next meeting. So I've talked to quite a few more residents and frankly, seems like it's hard to find someone who hasn't seen their yard waste recycling thrown in with their garbage.
Well, actually, we did. We did invite them to this evening's meeting. Uh, Mr. Palucci had personally called GFL. Like you hear, if you see him, he's nodding his head. Um, and said that we would appreciate them appearing at our meeting and I don't see any representative from GFL.
They just didn't respond?
Mr. Palucci, did they respond to you, sir?
They did respond and they just had nobody available for tonight's date. So, uh, I will reach out to them again and we will make it for the next council meeting.
Okay, they, they didn't have anyone available?
They wanted, uh, a certain individual and that person wasn't available, is what happened there.
Sure. Um, okay, well, they know when we meet, so.
Yeah, I sent the email out. Everybody got it and, uh, they just didn't have somebody available for tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, well, if you could, uh, yeah, if we can give them our next meeting date, that'd be good. And, um, my, my second item was about the, uh, medical marijuana facilities. Um, we'd set a month and I know it's, it's been more than a month now. Um, so, uh, yeah, what's the status on that?
The status is we are waiting for the blessing from our attorney. Um, as you know, we are not attorneys and so we rely on his expertise to see us through that. And Rich will be able to tell you where he is. And if he's at that point where he's ready to give us the go-ahead, to go ahead and start with the application process. So he can certainly speak during his report, or if you'd like, he could speak now.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to speak now. I did speak with, uh, Ms. Holman earlier today. Um, and, uh, she advised me that, uh, city administration is now in receipt of the, uh, proper, uh, overlay district map. And so, um, I informed, uh, Ms. Holman that, uh, I believe that, uh, now that the map has been received, it's been approved by city uh, administration, that, uh, it can be posted, uh, on the, uh, city's website and any other, uh, uh, places that city administration deems appropriate. Uh, I also recommended that, uh, the resolution that the city council has passed and also all of the applicable, uh, ordinances, uh, dealing with the, uh, medical marijuana facilities uh, should also be posted on the, uh, city's, uh, website and any other place that the city administration feels appropriate. And, uh, Ms. Holman informed me also that she has a, a tentative draft of the, uh, the actual application that she's going to get over to me tomorrow. Uh, I will review that upon receipt and it's the hope that, uh, uh, that application will be available for the public in the very, very near future. Um, so we're, we're almost there. I believe Ms. Holman is also, uh, uh, attending this meeting and, and can fill in any additional information that I haven't already provided.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilman DeMonaco?
Uh, no, I did not. I didn't know if Ms. Holman wanted to add anything like Rachel Samuel.
Uh, Ms. Holman, do you wanna add something?
Good evening. No, um, Mr. Albright, um, uh, stated everything correctly. Um, I have some drafts that he, um, will be able to review. Um, so we can get things posted and hopefully get everything online soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, sounds good. Thank you for your questions. Thank you, um, Ms. Doom.
You're welcome, Madam Mayor.
Moving right along to our finance director's report. Mr. Blom, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Danielle Palmaville, Controller. Um, Director Blum is on vacation this week and we have no further report.
Okay, any question for Ms. Palmaville? If I said that correctly, if I didn't, forgive me. Any questions for her right now that she can answer? Okay, have fun, Mr. Blom. Everybody needs a break from, you know, Everybody needs a break from, you know, from their job and he does a good job here. Moving right along to our city attorneys' report, Mr. Albright, good evening.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council, a, a couple of items to, uh, update the council and members of the public on. Uh, I was happy to see that the, uh, thirty-eighth District Court, the lobby is now open and that they are allowing members of the public to appear in person and take care of any, uh, uh, court fines and also to answer any questions that members of the public have. Um, I'm also starting to see more in-person cases where attorneys are actually appearing, uh, in the court, uh, that is at a very limited basis right now, but I anticipate over the course of the next thirty to forty-five days that, uh, I, I will begin seeing, uh, more and more, uh, parties appearing, uh, at the courthouse and I will certainly keep the council and, uh, members of the public updated on, uh, what happens over at the thirty-eighth District Court. Um, I already covered the medical marijuana update, uh, that I wanted to speak to the council about tonight. Uh, the dangerous building hearings, the council approved the, uh, show cause hearing minutes back from June first, um, I've also sent a copy, uh, along to each of the, uh, interested parties, uh, for those cases. I know the one party was represented by an attorney, so he also received a copy of the, uh, the council's decision along with the transcript from the, uh, court reporter, so those have gone out. And, uh, the council's also in receipt of our monthly status report for the, uh, month of July. Uh, again, I apologize for the page length, it was nineteen pages, but there are several matters on there that have been closed and will not be included on, uh, next month's, uh, the status report, so it should be, uh, much shorter. Uh, that being said, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Hey, thank you, any questions for our attorney? Saying now, moving right along to new business, item A, city hall camera system upgrade. I know you, uh, sent us some information, Ms. Doom, about this, did you want to add something, I was, it was an emergency, uh, email, was that, um, and that was in regards to this, correct? You're on mute. You're on mute, Ms. Doom.
Then I guess I can say anything. No, uh, just a, a brief, I, I was at, uh, the clerks conference when our cameras went down and so, um, Ms. Walton was good enough to do the research, uh, get prices for us and let us know, uh, what's available for us, we do need our cameras back up as quickly as possible. And so I will turn this over to Ms. Walton at this time, if anyone has questions. I believe you brought, you brought this at our last meeting when I was not here, Ms. Walton. And so, um, if there's anything you'd like to add or council has questions for you, this would be a great time.
Also, Ms. Walton.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Walton wants to speak.
No, go ahead, I didn't need to add, um, any additional detail, um, if you have any questions, I can answer those.
I'm proposing a motion, if you're ready, Madam Mayor.
I am.
A motion to authorize Able Electronics to upgrade the city hall camera system with a total cost of twenty-three thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-three cents.
Support.
Motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Item B, Community Housing Network request to purchase two-two-seven-eight-nine Roxanna, council. Any discussion, if not, let's, yes ma'am, go ahead.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
A motion to approve the sale of two-two-seven-eight-nine Roxanna parcel ID number zero-two dash fourteen dash twenty-nine dash four-seven-six dash zero-two-five to Community Housing Network for twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars as replacement for the previously approved sale of the property located at one-six-eight-two-six Collinson and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents related to the sale.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Next item, item C, results of adjacent owner offer to purchase vacant lot sales program, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one deadline, council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the sale of new vacant lot located at two-two-zero-eight-five Linwood parcel ID zero-two-fourteen dash thirty-one dash one oh six dash zero-two-four to Lydia Fox and James Dublin at two-two-zero-seven-five Linwood and to further authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents lo- related to the sale.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yes. Next item D, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two joint and crack sealing program, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I would move to award the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two joint and crack sealing program to the low bidder meeting specifications Al's Asphalt Paving Company of Taylor, Michigan. For the unit price is stated in its bid dated April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one with the first year estimate cost of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars, a second year estimate cost of a hundred and seven thousand one hundred dollars, for a total of two-year cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred dollars.
I said, support. Motion and support, no discussion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next item E, permanent grant of easement, Beaconsfield Avenue, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
On councilman Blom.
Oh, uh, well, you can go ahead and motion and then I just had, uh, one comment.
Um, I will motion to approve an ordinance to approve an ordinance with section twenty-two-eight-eight-zero-two of the East Point Code of Ordinances, the city manager appointment of Lisa Dieh-Tower, owner of two-two-four-ten-dash-twelve Grashit to the DDA Authority Board.
Please, please keep going, I think, right?
No.
And, uh, the easement.
Oh.
Yeah, that's a different.
E?
E.
The easement for Beaconsfield.
Sorry.
Well, you should have asked my question and then.
Yes. A motion to approve the granting of the permanent easement on Beaconsfield Avenue to the Macomb County Office of Public Works for the installation and operation of an inflatable rubber dam system within the eight-and-a-half-mile relief drain and authorize a city clerk and mayor to sign the.
I'll support that and then actually I guess it's more, mayor, it's more of a comment than a question, they, they had mentioned there's a video that we could see, um, showing like what this project will do and I was wondering, and they said it was short too, I was wondering if we could just show that, so, I mean, I'd like to see it, but also the residents can see kind of what the, uh, what this project will do, you know, it's going to save us from putting a lot of sewage in the Lake St. Clair, so, um, I think it'd be good for everyone to see.
Good evening, Mr. Cur, how are you?
Good, how about yourself?
Good, you have a short, short video for us?
Right, we do have with us, uh, Vince Estorino from the Macomb County Public Works Office, the operations and flow manager there as well as Eric Gerling, who's a consulting engineer with the county as well, they've joined us in the meeting too and they'd be able to answer to that.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Estorino.
Good evening, everyone, uh, Eric, Eric's gonna go ahead and share his screen and, and show the video. Um, I did show it during the last presentation that we had.
Yeah, I thought you showed it already.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought we did.
No problem, though, we.
Yeah, let's do it again.
No, no problem, be happy to show it again.
Okay, thank you, how long is the video?
There you go.
How long is the video? Mr. Eric?
It should be real quick.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about one minute.
Okay, thank you.
Is that coming through for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, we can see it. Can you do, can you discuss it while we're looking, knowing what we're looking at?
Yeah, no, no problem.
Thank you.
So basically what this is showing is inflatable rubber dams that will be installed within the sewer itself. Uh, during the rain events will inflate those dams and store a wedge of water, it's ba- basically what you're seeing on the screen right there. Uh, that wedge of water near, uh, Beaconsfield is going to be about three-and-a-half million gallons, um, which will be able to keep out the lake every single rain event. Um, at the end of the rain event, when there's enough room in the system downstream, we can slowly deflate those inflatable bladders and send water down to GLWA for proper treatment at their wastewater treatment plant. So, not only are these keeping, uh, treated discharges out of the lake, but they're also saving on costs for treating that water that's coming into the Chapperton retention basin.
Thank you for that video. Anything else, councilman?
There, I guess I did have one question then, um, with, since we did have this huge major rain event very recently here, that from what I read was seven to eight inches in a nineteen-hour span and looking at the documents in here, it, is, does this, would this project be able to help at all for that? Or it seemed like, it seemed like when there was a very heavy rain event, uh, we might not be able to take advantage of that because there might be flooding upstream of the bladders then, I think? I don't know, if you could.
Correct.
Answer that question, I was trying to understand that.
Yeah, so in a, in an event like we just had, what would happen is those inflatable bladders would just stay completely deflated. We, we'd want to allow that peak, that high intensity flow to get through the system and not cause any issues upstream. Once that, you know, intensity started falling off, we could then capture whatever remaining flow was in that pipe, but the majority of the time, these are going to be used for smaller events, that, if you look at the trends over like a ten-year period, um, you'll actually see that the majority of the events are two inches of rain or less. Uh, these, these big rain events where it's three to seven inches of rain are, are anomalies, um, they don't happen all the time. So, while it might help, help a little, uh, more than likely it's not going to be used during the worst of that event.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, um, just a, just a question that maybe I'm the only one that can't figure it out, but, uh, can you, Vince, can you tell me who comes up with this stuff, who, who has the brain power to invent this thing?
So, there's, there, actually, uh, DWSD, um, installed these in the early two thousands. Um, so we, we've been looking and watching how their system has performed over the years.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then when we, we started at Macomb County Public Works doing our master planning, we installed flow meters within that large twelve-foot diameter pipe, the eight-and-a-half-mile relief drain. And what we found was that there was only about, in, in really high-intensity storms, uh, there would only be, you know, uh, thirty and three feet of, three feet of water in that twelve-foot diameter pipe. Um, so, there's a lot of space available for storage. Um, and, and so we kind of took a cue off of others that have done this and, and started designing this, uh, for this system.
That is incredible, I, I hope, I hope our audience appreciated your answer, Vince, that, that's a lot of work and a lot of ingenuity, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? We got motion and support, um, call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Moving right along to F, appointment by city manager with concurrence of city council to the Downtown Development Authority Board. Ms. Doom?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, we can go straight to it, I thought she had a comment, it's not, okay.
Um, yeah, I'll motion to approve in accordance with section two-eight-eight-point-zero-two of the City of East Point Code and Ordinances, the city manager's appointment of Lisa Dieh-Tower, owner of two-two-four-ten-dash-twelve Grashit to the DDA Authority Board.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item, item G, the approval of city attorney contract, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the proposed city attorney contract.
Or? Motion and support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item, the approval of special event application, the Divas Palace Appreciation Day, August first, twenty-twenty-one, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, there was one concern that the fire department had, so I would motion to approve the special event application for Divas Palace Appreciation Day on, um, August first, twenty-twenty-one, with the exception of no parking on the sidewalk, so they cannot park on the sidewalks.
Uh, yes, Ms. Walton?
Um, so I actually, I don't know if the, um, building director or, um, fire marshal want to speak on this part, but they had talked with the building owner that did not approve this event to happen in that parking lot. Um, and that was an update, I know in his initial announcement that he'd expect out, he was planning to get in touch with the building owner, um, and he had done so, um, following that and I spoke with him, um, today about that, so just wanted to give you, uh, a heads up prior to the vote.
Uh, you were saying the building owner didn't approve of it, this is the person owning leasing the business?
Yes, this person is taking the business and the owner did not approve that to happen in the parking lot.
Okay. So, I guess we can, um, you guys want to table this and come back to it, I don't, does the, uh, person leasing it know that? You know?
I'm not aware if she's, if she knows that the building owner didn't, uh, she, the building owner wasn't even aware that she was planning it, um, and had not approved. I'm sure they've had the conversation by now, but that would just be speculation.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I motion to table it until we get clarification.
Well, I'll rescind my motion first before we table it.
Okay.
And then I'll support that, tabling.
Okay, motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
For Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Next item, approval of special event application, East Point Day of Prayer, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would move the approval of special event application for the East Point Day of Prayer event to be held on August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Next item, discussion on hybrid council meetings, this was brought up by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim and also Councilman Curly, you have the floor.
I, I would, uh, Madam Mayor, as a gentleman, I would yield to Madam Sarah.
Okay, Madam Sarah.
So, um, yeah, I brought this up at our last meeting about meeting back in person, um, the city manager did send out some recommendations. Um, in my opinion, I think we could probably move forward with just going back into person right now. Um, I know some council did have some other concerns, um, with possibly trying to do like a hybrid method, uh, method with maybe doing it with Zoom and I think that, um, she mentioned that it would take until August to get those cameras set up, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct, Ms. Doom?
It, we could limp it along, eh, that's the best way to say it, we do have very old equipment that needed to be upgraded. Uh, fortunately, it wasn't a few years ago because things have really improved and the cost has come down. But, um, yeah, we have some options that we could do a Facebook Live and people could join in. We did that in my former place of employment where people emailed in their questions and we read them. Um, it would be difficult, though, we can certainly make it happen, but our biggest concern is that people would not be able to have an opportunity to speak and how do we have the Zoom on all of you and yet allow people to join in? Now, I'm not an I T person, but, um, we did put all our heads together, uh, Otis, our executive, uh, uh, assistant in our I T department and Mariah also helped, um, thinking of possibilities for us to, you know, trying and create a hybrid situation, none will be ideal, but if the council desires, we certainly will do our absolute best to try and make it happen. Um, our biggest recommendation is we do need new equipment, it's very outdated and I understand some of the equipment actually came from our former building, uh, which parts of that? Uh, which parts of that equipment, I don't know. That is from our, um, operator who handles our meetings. So, um, that's pretty much what I have. Mariah, do you have a little bit more that you'd like to add?
Um, no, you said it perfectly.
Thank you for not being an IT person. I, I tried my best.
Senator Curly?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, well, I haven't changed my mind since last time. I am extremely, extremely concerned about having a live, if you will, council meeting at, at City Hall. Um, unless we make it a rule that absolutely no questions of people coming in. Have you gotten a one shot or two shots? Uh, you have to wear your mask if you haven't had a shot. I don't want to go back. I, I'm not, I don't want to put myself or our citizens in jeopardy. There's a new virus out. They, the experts say it's more dangerous than the one we had before. And, uh, there is even a chance that if you've had both shots, you might be able to get it. So at such time that the administration say, Harvey, you got your wish, absolutely no restrictions, everything's okey dokey, uh, would you like to come in under those circumstances? That would be the only, um, Sarah, that would be the only time that I would vote yes to come back. If there's, if things have settled down, then, come on, we all know things have not settled down. The count is low, but there are still people dying and there are still a lot of people who have not gotten their shots. And I guess if I was walking in a city hall and I wanted to see the council meeting, you, you're standing there saying, Harvey, did you get your shots? I said, well, yeah, I got my shots. I got both of them and I haven't got any. So that's the chance that we would be taking. I, for the, for myself and the citizens, don't want to put our, in ourselves in that position. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman DeMonaco?
Um, so I completely, uh, agree with you, Councilman Curly. I think we erring on the side you're saying, I think is, uh, certainly a good idea. We've been able to do this sort of business, you know, on Zoom for, you know, more than a year now. So, you know, what's another couple of months? You know, it seems like we're able to do the business of the city. Of course, we'd all like to be in person, but if it's, you know, the less that we can see each other in person, I think the better. And I think this is one good example where we can just do everything over Zoom. Um, the second item was, I, I have been thinking about all those options, Ms. Doom, from your, uh, weekly report. And I think, uh, and I was thinking about what we did before, um, COVID hit. And I think there might be an option that kind of mixes a couple of your bullet points together that I think would work pretty well. Um, we used to, um, livestream on YouTube for a while. We had, uh, just like an extra camera up, um, like on the wall, not one of the cameras that are like permanently built in. And so if we just, I, I think we could use that camera for Zoom. So once council's in person, we, you know, the camera can be on us. And then, um, you know, if Mayor, you know, you could be even maybe on your computer and see the public, you know, people, the public on Zoom and just call them into the meeting, or someone could help you do that. Um, and we could essentially do the same thing, but we'd all be in person then. And I think that would work kind of like it did for when we were livestreaming to YouTube. Um, obviously trying that out with a couple of people, you know, would be a good idea. But maybe if we figure that out by the time, I don't know, when we're going to decide to come back into person, maybe we can figure that out and, um, see how that works.
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, and just real quick, yeah, my, you know, my biggest thing is that, I mean, I understand like being, working, doing Zoom is definitely more convenient and it's definitely safer. But I just feel like, you know, the, the person working at the, the grocery store or the gas station, they don't have that option to work Zoom. And I feel like it's just more of our, like, responsibility that, you know, we should be meeting in person too and making sure that everyone has that opportunity to attend our meetings if it's, if it's possible. I realized before it really wasn't. We were kind of stuck doing Zoom. But I just think that moving forward, like, just, a lot, I know we have a lot of attendance on Zoom and it's great, but I know not everyone has the ability to attend on Zoom. Not everybody does have a computer. Not everybody does, you know, and they, so they don't have an option. They don't have an option of being heard at our meetings because, um, we're doing these via Zoom.
Hmm, Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you know, I, I do Zoom from my cell phone and I'm, I don't happen to know no one, not anyone that doesn't have a cell phone. So, you know, they could download Zoom on their cell phone and we can stay in a safer environment. Um, my grandkids have cell phones, so I, I really don't see the need to endanger us and endanger the citizens of the city by putting us all together, especially with this new, uh, variant that's, that is out there. Um, I know that a lot of people are not wearing masks. I go to stores, they're not wearing masks. I still wear my mask at stores. I still wear my mask whenever I shop, gas stations, because you just don't know. So I, I believe that it would be safer right now for us to stay in a Zoom environment and that people can download Zoom on their cell phones. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Just to make a one comment, uh, and with the, with the folks watching, um, I love Sarah dearly. We all do, and we both have a difference of opinion. Uh, I'm not right, I'm not wrong. She's not right, she's not wrong. So folks, don't go shutting off your television tonight and say, oh, well, Harvey and Sarah were arguing. Well, we're not arguing. It's a free democracy and we have a difference of opinion. So I still love Sarah as much as I did an hour and a half ago.
So, Madam Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to table this, um, item to the first meeting of September?
So I, I'll support that, but you're tabling the discussion or you're, what are you doing?
Yeah, I was tabling, tabling the discussion so we can go in September, review it again and see if we want to change our mind at that time. That gives us a couple of months.
Okay, I, I like that. I'll support that.
Motion and support, Council. I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Walton.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Member DeMonaco?
Yes.
Okay, next item is item K was, which was added by Councilwoman Lucido to, for the commission board review, uh, Mayor Proton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we got an email today from our accessor saying that, um, there was two people up for a reappointment for the board of review and that they both have been doing a great job and they both know their roles. So I just wanted to add this to the agenda before the July meeting so we could, um, reappoint Jacqueline McCoon and Dwayne Brennan to the board of review.
Okay. Council, so we, so who appoints the, um, the board of review?
I believe it's a council appointment.
Because I didn't get, I just got it today and get to, because I, what I would like to have done is actually give people the opportunity to apply for it and not just, you know, reappoint people without people actually having a chance to be a, a part of it, the application process.
Mad, Madam Mayor, there's, there's a half a motion, um, that's on the table. So I'm going to second the motion so we have a, a full motion on the floor or on the table.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I thi, I, I think, yeah, usually we would not do this, but their next meeting is on the tw- the twentieth, which is the same day as our next council meeting.
Okay.
Uh, so yeah, I think we, um, that, that's why we got this last minute today. Um, and then second, I just wanted to add some dates onto that, um, so that we keep our dates straight for all these appointments. If we are going to make these appointments, it should be, uh, Ms. Macon for March fifteenth, twenty twenty five. And then Mr. Breeden, his ends, his current term ends in, uh, you know, twenty one, well, a couple of months ago. Um, so then his would extend to March fifteenth, twenty twenty four, I would suggest, if that's fine, um, for the motion.
Yeah, I'll support that change.
Yeah, I, yes, I'll still support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Okay, move right along to the payrolls and bills.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will make a motion to, um, we're going to remove one item and that's check number one two six six two one. I spoke with Mr. Rohib earlier and it's something that, um, he's going to cover the cost of. So I will approve payroll and bills in the amount of two million eight hundred fifty three thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second.
Motion and second it, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next item is the hearing of the public. The second hearing of the public is now open. Um, Ms. Walton?
I just opened the chat, Mayor. Eddie and Marcy did leave a comment. I'm not sure if she would like to speak again, um, at this hearing of the public.
That was all?
She actually just left another comment. Do you want me to read it out loud or do you want her to speak?
She can speak, please.
Can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Can you?
I can hear you, yes, I can.
I was-
Proceed, please.
Grab, um, ah, shoot, my battery's running low. Um, so finishing up, um, oh, great. Well, um, I don't know how long my battery's going to last. So, um, if it cuts out, it's because the battery died on my laptop.
Okay.
Anyways, that said, I had, um, requested a Zoom meeting with the city manager and with the, uh, public safety director because of all these issues that have remained unresolved for the longest time. I did not appreciate the, uh, unprofessional reply I got back. I can let you know this, uh, this was maybe about ten years ago that I met with the previous city manager and previous public safety director. And you know what? There was no issue. I didn't get any, you know, hassle about, no, we don't have to meet with you. Well, I'm sorry, but you know what? You guys are public servants and when your residents have problems and we're going through every avenue we possibly can to get to a resolution, you have to go up the chain. So no, you don't get to respond in a nasty tone towards residents because the problem is not resolved. This nuisance tenant refuses to participate in mediation. And I do want to point out real quick that it's the public safety director who recommended that when we spoke after the neighborhood watch meeting. Um, he came up with that idea. I thought it was a fantastic idea. I was more than happy to participate. So, you know, this problem has been ongoing and, you know, ignoring the problem and telling me that, you know, there's nothing wrong, no laws have been broken, no ordinances have been violated, that is absolutely false. I have provided pictures, I have provided video. And, you know, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, it's the same old thing. It's not resolved. I don't know, what is this going to take? A writ of mandamus or a third party agency to do an investigation? Because there are several other problems you haven't resolved. And I also question in regards to the water bill. Um, that rental house from two thousand sixteen-
Thirty seconds.
Two thousand twenty showed up as zero units of water. How many more water bills were like that? And how are you going to recoup that money? And again, when are you going to enforce the ordinance and get that branch out of that backyard? It is massive. You guys are violating your own ordinances. So I want answers and I'm requesting again a Zoom meeting with the city manager and-
Time is up, ma'am. I think I gave you an extra couple of minutes, so thank you so much for your comments and your concerns. Well, um, Ms. Doom, I believe that we have her email address and we-
Yes, we do.
Will do our best to get those things done. Thank you again. Um, next, Ms. Walton?
Yes, Mayor, um, there's nothing else in the chat and I'm not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, um, I know, um, we have Bishop Lloyd of Ramen International. I know he's doing the, the prayer here. Um, I know he had to, he had Bible service today. Did you want to say anything before we close out, Bishop? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Teamwork makes the dream work. Um, I apologize for my lateness, but as you stated, I did have Bible class and I don't know if the, um, Day of Prayer passed today.
Yes, sir, it did.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other, thank you, sir, um, any other residents or guests would like to speak now at the hearing of the public before we close?
So, see, anything in the chat and there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay, the second hearing of the public is now closed. We're going to go right into mayor and council reports, starting with Councilman Curly. You're on mute, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, just a cou- couple of quick things. Um, I, I quite often walk over to Kennedy Park and, uh, just a few days ago, I did see more than a hundred kids out there practicing football. And it is a great, uh, great occasion. I guess, uh, I would direct my suggestion to, uh, our city manager that perhaps you can get a in-person eyeball-to-eyeball meeting. Uh, you know, I've always said that, uh, there's nothing better than, uh, sitting across from somebody, looking them in the face and the eyeballs to resolve something. So I think there's, uh, just a, a lot of misunderstanding and, and a lot of questions both parties would have. So, um, Madam City Manager, if you could arrange that to have, have the UN, uh, the lady and our director meet together at City Hall or wherever you want to meet. And I think this thing could be resolved. Now, second, the, the second thing, Madam Mayor, just, just to comment, this, it's not going to go anywhere uh, because the state and their greedy hands and their greedy money-grabbing hands, uh, with the marijuana. I understand that we are allowed to charge five thousand dollars for a permit. Uh, not a lot of money. I, I'm not going to repeat what I heard today about how much money the marijuana stores across the street on Eight Mile make in a month. It would, it would turn your hair gray, Madam Mayor. Um, but it's, it's a shame that the state would come in and say you can only charge five thousand dollars. I was ready to make a motion to charge them fifty thousand dollars. And you know what? Before you called to roll, that check would be written. That's, that's how much they're going to make. Fifty thousand dollars wouldn't mean a dang thing to them. But unfortunately, the state comes in and says, you can only charge five thousand dollars. Well, anyway, I know we got to go on. I'm frustrated, Madam Mayor. So thanks for putting up with me. Now, now I can, now I can go have something to eat because I feel better.
Right. Thank you for that. I think that's why I didn't want medical marijuana in the city of East Point for several reasons. And one of those was that a lot of people thought we were going to make money and we don't. So I'm glad you cleared that up and that, that is one reason why. And several, amongst several other reasons why I voted it down. But now that you allowed it, we have to move forward now and do the best that we can. Councilman DeMonaco?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, first, I want to say happy anniversary to my wonderful wife, Alyssa. Today. Uh, second, uh, I took part in the visioning session with the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, that was really good and pretty interesting because, uh, they did breakout sessions and the breakout session in that I was in, uh, had quite a few shy people. So it was basically a one-on-one with me and someone from the Boys and Girls Club. So I was happy to give my opinion, hoping some other people, uh, talk. But, you know, hopefully a lot of that pans out. They've got a lot of good people there and, um, hopefully we have the interest for that. Uh, and also, uh, recently I spoke at one of the, uh, Michigan Ind- Uh, and also, uh, recently I spoke at one of the, uh, Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. It's a mouthful for the name there, MICRC, probably easier way to say it. I spoke at one of their public hearings and I just kind of gave a quick little tidbit that I thought made sense, um, for drawing the districts for US House and, um, the State House and State Senate. Um, I just suggested that we try to look at the government authorities we have, like we're tied, you know, tightly. We've talked about RARE tonight. Uh, we're tied tightly with RARE for rec authority. And, you know, we do dispatch with other cities and other different authorities. Probably makes sense to try and draw the lines for, um, our State House and Senate, um, and US House districts, uh, according to those lines so that we can kind of get together and, you know, uh, put some pressure on them if we need to for anything regarding those sorts of things. Uh, then of course we had Cruise and Grasshit in Juneteenth. Both were wonderful events, uh, in the city. Uh, the weather was bad for a minute here or there, especially during the, the cruise in the middle, right in the middle was a pretty big downpour. And I know right at the beginning of the Juneteenth event too, but it all seemed to work out. It, uh, was sunny the rest of the day. It was nice to see the fire department recognized for a hundred years of service. Uh, thank you all. I think a couple of you are still here. Thanks, Brian and Nick. Uh, I think Nick was hiding all meetings somewhere. Maybe he's gone now. Um, and then, uh, yeah, for Juneteenth, you know, um, we just got to continue recognizing the historical importance of emancipation and, you know, slaves in Texas finally hearing word that they were free. Uh, you know, we can't change our history, but we can certainly learn from it. And so, uh, it was good to see those events, uh, going on in the city. And that's all, Mayor.
That sounds good. Council, Councilwoman Moore, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I, I, um, just want to say that it's nice that everyone was able to enjoy their family over this long holiday weekend and everyone was safe and sound and no one got hurt. Um, I mean, I'm sure that there are people out there, like the fire chief said that, you know, unfortunately, uh, got killed by a firework. Um, but I'm just happy to see everyone and, um, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, Lucino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, first of all, I'd like to give a shout out to everyone that organized the Grasshit Cruise. It was a great event. Turnout was not quite as high as I expected, but the rain definitely kept people home. And also thank you to those who planned the Juneteenth event. I was able to attend that one also. And that seemed like a really good event. Um, it was really well prepared. I think she did a good job for planning it in a short amount of time. But once again, I think the turnout was a little bit lower than I expected. But it was thunderstorming when I arrived, so I'm sure that kept some people away. So, but thank you to everyone that helped make both those events possible. I would also like to ta, uh, take a moment that if you haven't had the chance to hit our parks and see the artwork that's out there, the DIA has their Inside Out project going. Um, I was able to see a few pieces. I haven't hit all the parks yet to see all of them, but it's really kind of cool to see them out in our parks. Also, uh, RARE will be hosting a family concert and movie night at Kennedy Park on August 5th at 6:00 PM. I want to start announcing it now to let everyone know so they can put that date down on their calendar so hopefully that they can attend. Um, and that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for those announcements and thank you all of council. I want to, we have Kimberly Naylor on here. I want to, uh, give her, since we doing shout outs. Uh, I want to give her a shout out. Me and her was awarded Women of Excellence of 2021 and 2022. And since we're both residents here at East Point and representatives of our city, it was nice to have, you know, the mayor of East Point and also Ms. Naylor, who's on our planning commission, also a resident. And also the president of Nabwick, uh, acknowledged, um, Michigan Chronicle chooses 40 women each year, 40 top women who are doing things in their community and making change. So I want to congratulate her openly and say, keep up the good work and all those who are, um, also awarded. I also want to say good job to all those who, um, put together the Grasshit Cruise as well. I know it took a lot of work and all the sponsors that helped put that together. I also want to, uh, thank Mrs. Keela Bonner, uh, me and her, we worked really hard for Juneteenth. I want to thank the sponsors who are a part of that. I never want to forget the sponsors, um, who came aboard at the last minute to make it happen, something historical. You know, we have to do what we have to do to make those things happen and we did that. I want to thank Foot Locker, uh, located in East Point. I want to thank Captain Jays for, uh, serving a hundred residents food. Um, also I want to thank, it was so many people, uh, Fresh Choice, our supermarket for donating bags and snacks for a hundred kids, uh, to attend and watch movies. And I hope I'm not forgetting anybody. If I am, please forgive me. It was so many, uh, sponsors. Uh, I'm sorry, McDonald's. I have to definitely say McDonald's for, uh, donating money and also snacks for the children. So we had big, uh, sponsors that came out. Uh, so I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman Moore for her, her donation as well. And I believe Councilman DeMonica, um, paid for the application. So, uh, I want to thank everybody that was a part, helping us put that together. And, um, uh, definitely Akeela Bonner for, you know, stepping up and working with me. It's a lot of work putting an event together. And as the mayor, you know, I want to see more council stay at the end of the event and help me clean up. Uh, I wanted to, I want us to be fair and we're going to put something together, you know, um, help me clean up afterwards because, you know, and so I see it at the event. They respect me as a mayor because I'm doing something that most people don't want to do. So we ask people to clean up. We should, they, they need to see us cleaning it too as elected officials. And so, um, it was raining that day, but we had a good day and we did something positive. And we're going to keep doing that, um, and moving forward. Also, I want to give a shout out to the Boys and Girls Club from doing the visioning session and working with me on that, um, during part two. And, um, also they're going to start the Detroit Pistons Basketball Camp. For more information, you can go to B as in boy, Boys and Girls Club, B as in boys, G as in girls, C as in club, SM.org for more information. They're going to be doing two basketball camps, one right here in the great city of East Point, at the East Point High School. And also they're going to be doing one in Mount Clemens. So they're going to do it only to the, um, to the first a hundred youth from age six to 15. And they're not just doing boys, they're doing girls too. It's the Boys and Girls Club. So, you know, please attend. Um, it's something huge that we're doing. I've been working with them since last year, bringing this to the city of East Point. And so it takes us all to bring things together. So if you, um, and we're still trying to fund it. So I'm asking not only the residents, but also council, if you know of foundations, organizations, and also if you want to give to the Boys and Girls Club to make this happen in the city of East Point. It doesn't take the mayor to do it. It doesn't take one person to do it. We all have to do it. We want to see things in our city. We have to come together and bring those possibilities here or it would be impossible. So also, I also want to thank all the new, we have a lot of new businesses coming to the city of East Point. And I want to say welcome from the mayor herself and, uh, and, and, uh, city of East Point, welcome. And we're glad that you're investing your business right here in the city of East Point. We know that East Lam Law is being sold. Um, I, I work very closely with different mayors. And one of those mayors was, um, Mayor Kendall. And I also want to thank her for coming to the Juneteenth event. We said, we actually celebrated Juneteenth and did a historic combination of two cities, um, and two different counties with two mayors who, uh, were history makers. And we made history together again, right here in the city of East Point. And I want to thank her for coming out and for the city of Harper Woods for inviting me to their city to speak. So, um, we hope that those businesses that come out of East Lam Law go right to Kelly Rowell. And so we can rebuild Kelly Rowell how it used to be. And so we're just working on a lot of things to better our community, better our residents. And again, we can't do that by ourselves. So, um, we're going into closed session and then we want to adjourn it. You can stay and wait till we say bye or you can say bye now. Uh, we're going to closed session now, Council.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, could, could we have a 10-minute break for obvious reasons?
Sure. Once we make the motion, we can have that 10-minute break, sir.
Uh, I want to move that, we've gone to closed session, 10 minutes from now.
Madam Mayor, could we just state the reason for going into closed session, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, we're going into closed session for collective bargaining pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268C.
Thank you.
Thank you. 10 minutes.
Support that.
Okay, motion is support to go into closed session. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Oh, he's running before. Uh, there'll still be four yeses, I think, right?
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you. See you in 10 minutes. Everyone has to leave. Have a good evening and thank you. So we, uh, and we just came out our closed session for the collective bargain, bargaining agreement pursuant to MCL 15, uh, point 268C, uh, council.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the collective party bargaining agreements that presented to us in closed session.
Okay.
Support, motion is supported. Uh, call the roll, please.
Lucino?
Yes.
Member Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
Yes, um, now we're going to move to adjournment, Council.
So moved.
Support.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Me and Ajahn, you guys have a good night.
Thank you. Sarah, let's look at the time.
I know.